Ah, shoot.
My wife makes cards and she made one with a gnome. It's like horse's eyes.
Yeah.
We need to wait three minutes or...
Pretty far.
Yeah.
Four minutes.
Are you gonna quiet up?
Yeah. Oh, one more thing I got for you guys. This is, this is, this is from the Dackel. That's all the different software that different counties are using throughout the state. Please.
Do you really care?
Oh, what a character.
For, for the next hour and a half.
For a few more moments.
At least, yeah.
Dan, I have a question for you.
My products were sold yesterday.
All before.
It might be easy, it might be difficult.
I think we had a total of nine.
When, when would the official newspaper change its...
I asked that question to Sam. I got an email here about you.
There was a few late... What time?
Official newspaper, does that...
Yes, and I haven't looked into that yet. Sorry, Dan, I will get you an answer.
I, we have the same question. We have no idea.
Yeah.
I'm kind of guessing that it's January, like most positions are, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I'll get you an answer.
Like I said, it might be an easy question, it might be tough, but I don't know.
What's that question?
Um, the election, he's in Star is now the official newspaper. And we're just wondering if it's January one or...
When, when, when does that begin?
That's a big switch.
Oh, that's a North Dakota sentry code thing you gotta look up.
I was gonna say, I've guessed in some of the century code. I would assume that's, please, I don't know.
That one, I'll be wrong.
And Dun County is actually going to Dickinson Press, too.
Dickinson Press.
Oh, really?
I would say it's after January one, but...
Why?
I'd be wrong again.
Of all the decisions with the old company that they made, I mean, that was great at the time when we lost center and our sports editor was trying to cover center as well, it was just getting overwhelmed. And then they went and auto killed me or it became Dun County. We don't have enough coverage. I love people to cover those already done.
I like you all, guys.
And I was able to give Dun County news.
Keep track of my emails.
Put that file right between us, I wouldn't have to tell them.
Yeah.
There we go.
That sounds almost like a road game.
That request has been granted.
Mile shorter. I think Wayne set me up on that one.
He's like baiting you.
I didn't say nothing about the engineer, I just...
No, no.
Great. That would be... Well, I'm just trying to break you in for the next.
See, Wayne is over here staring.
Stirring and stirring, then he's gonna be like, go with the stick, I'm out. Yep. We're gonna be like, really, Wayne?
There he goes.
Yep.
Don't let the door hit ya, oh!
Right.
Oh!
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
See, we had to bring him in because of you.
You're not the new sheriff, yeah.
Right.
Boy, he's a lot, lot faster than the old sheriff.
The panic button worked well.
All right, are we ready? Ready? All right, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Is there any additions to the agenda?
I would like to add that the museum over in Bula did call, so if we can discuss maybe a potential change in venue for the next, for the last commission meeting of the year.
Correct.
So we can add that.
Okay. And then I'd like to add, um, just a short discussion on, um, the reorganization meeting in December.
So the last meeting of the year and number nine would be what, organization?
Reorganization meeting. Any other additions?
Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, I'll approve the agenda with the two additions.
Okay, motion by Wayne to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Uh, minutes from November one meeting?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Um, I'm gonna give that to Jean.
Oh, okay.
Seconded by Jean. Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Um, approval of bills?
James is in his last meeting, so they sometimes put it at the museum. Yeah, for the county commission meeting. We're requesting that at the museum. And then done that in the past. Last meeting of the year. Sorry.
Put that terrifier.
Got it from you.
They're gonna run over your head.
Exactly.
Sounds like a short...
And dealt with exact clarity. Clarity. It's like I, that's what I showed our editor, the effective date. Just, you type that North Dakota sentry code and then basically the subject matter and generally it'll come up.
I'm gonna try that.
It didn't work for you?
Well, they asked me yesterday about it.
Well, your email...
We'll look at that tomorrow.
You must be flagged as an editor, so they... Move you aside.
He went something.
Candy bar or something?
I got this nice sticky note here.
Smoke flake?
Right.
A shovel, slow shovel? They told it each?
Are your rates different?
Not the sheriff.
That's the sheriff.
I don't know.
He's not the sheriff. It's God until January first.
I got the non-ability on a lot of things still there.
Well, they've bested nothing with busy, I'm sure about.
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
No, I haven't read that name before.
After January one, then the raffle for the... Then I'll have to slow down, Wayne, really.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Speed, uh, speed zone on them in the altar. Tanny, tanny rubbers were kinda smoking the altar.
Tanny rubbers?
Have to have a hall monitor, rate them up.
I'll rate them up. You're gonna need to go to detention for it.
Yeah.
Are there any good?
I don't know. That maybe you know. If it's starting out, yeah, I think you're in it. It depends on how far this, it creeps out. And I think if it's like bigger than a quarter, you're trying out, it's done for.
One more.
You gotta live with it.
You're putting all the liability on them, huh?
Yeah.
Check them out. The reason I haven't got it fixed is you gotta look at what it is.
Right. Well, you guys usually always question it. No, they're kind of getting inflexed on anything, so... We don't look for over time, so...
Does anybody, this is a personal question, does anybody know where chip lizards are?
We already discussed that, none of us know. We had to work around that.
Heson.
I wrote it down, cause I think chips are placed...
So do I.
But they're definitely being compensated.
We aren't neither.
Yeah, none of us are either.
I have to contact the Heson Chamber of Commerce.
But yeah, we had a good turnout of everything. The balance was a good turnout to early votes. A chip rerender.
Chip, chip rerender.
You never know though, right?
I've never seen that so excited.
I was gonna look at what we're doing at the two locations at the next one if I stay on.
Not if I'm late.
Just for your information.
Sorry, we got your back. Sorry, we got your back. Quietly pulled to the side.
So I took him over there, cause he's...
How did you like it? Did he do the machine or did he do a paper? Did he do the express vote or did he do a paper? Yeah, cause you could do an express vote where she was on the screen and then it prints out valid.
I didn't know that. Well, I didn't walk up, so I don't know if they ask him. And then he sat down.
You can, you can pay up to seventy percent?
So it's kinda like a built-in, this is a Marlin residence address, yeah?
Right.
Which is crazy.
No, not saying that the portfolio holder can't walk it down and approve it and give it to the board and say everything's... Not saying you can't do that. But you, you have to be comfortable with that seventy percent. I'll send you, I had it with me, but not anymore.
Does he have, like, is there a base there and... Would he live on base? Yeah.
No, he's, he's insane.
So he kept his residence in North Dakota?
Yeah, as a military person, where he came from, that's always, like, him.
Four two nine. Little can it hold up?
And I don't know how.
So does his driver's license, somewhere to go to? Look at that. Right, and same state.
We probably went for twenty-four.
What's the code for four two nine expenses?
It sounded good.
Yeah, this lady's expensive.
She did.
Fun, what's the four two nine, can you read it?
From which account?
She's a general financier.
He's on a... I would have to look it up. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Most far I wanted to was put there. Plus, then all the shoveling behind the pickup, get out.
It was his first time, so.
Said, good.
Actually, it was shoveling from a car.
I always like seeing those first timers come in.
The pickup I got out a few days ago.
Just drive it out.
Yeah, no, I shoveled that, too.
A handful of them.
When he's not at the grill.
It was, it was at the grill, so...
Cause there was a lot of... You don't have to check them.
One swipe with the bob, you have to...
An hour. Yeah.
Oops, got the piece in the grill, I wonder why. Would you please email or text Quinn and ask him what it is? She could, I mean, it's right in the...
While you guys are... Yeah, perhaps you could be helpful? Be neighborly. It is?
Just so it wasn't like a few years...
Yep.
First day of kids surprises, sure.
No, it just if they get a new vehicle, then it has to be like what it is.
Assume that's kind of what it was.
And they got the, the west border, they just haven't come in.
How are we differentiating the federal jails versus the county?
So that they have a couple of them up right now. That's what we've been discussing this whole time, Marv.
Yeah, definitely.
You gotta do it anyway, so...
If it's a teacher or an inmate, a federal inmate, then they've been tracked.
The only thing that is, that we get reverse from the feds that we keep separate is the transportation. Medical and medical, cause that is spilled directly back to us. We should.
Okay, I got this all jacked up.
It'll be right.
Requiredment.
Right?
Flip what's up with this.
The way I understood these accepted it was like... Lights in the toilet area and all. Itemized that, or just, you know, the items that we get, like a trip over to the Sacagawea Medical Center. That'll be kept separate.
Yeah.
How's that?
Supposed to be one for each day or next day?
What? Um, some of them are not elected, some of them are early vote. We're here during our...
Age development, off nurse development of the...
And some of them are here during... Part of the mail-in ballot board.
So do you have some precincts, precincts reporting late?
Precincts reporting late? Was that an issue?
Well, nationally you have these large areas and then they got, all of a sudden they find another...
It's nice explanation right now.
That's, it's...
It smells hot.
Hit ones. No, no, we were good. We had a lot of them. The end of the night. It's not used to like a sentence, or as usual, like that. Yeah, and then reorganization. Board reorganization. Well, the first, one in December and then again in...
No. It's a huge bill. Where we're at on that whole thing.
So then what you're saying about the new commissioners that come on in December and then take over for the commissioners that are leaving, those portfolios, and then it reorganizes in January?
Yes.
Does it mean about the newspaper? The, the official newspaper, they say, you got any, see in your box agreements?
I wanted to, I, I didn't have to print that one out, but I showed them the sentry code. That is January one.
Oh, wait, oh. I'll double check for you though, too, so. Did he?
I guess I don't, so the last meeting in December, if the minutes are approved, the first meeting in January, does that mean those minutes are published, Scott?
You have to work that out.
That's valid, we'll look into that.
From the plan.
Yep, good question.
And do we have to start that the first?
That's what we're...
That's what we're demanding.
You can publish it both and it'll be all taken care of.
Single chart, you know?
That's true. Travel time was more than the lady was looking on the scale. Imagine that. Get a little deeper and see the forty ton truck.
That's what stated in...
It just talks about when they, you elect a new chairman, but not reorganization of the board. That's probably in another subsection.
You gonna share with the class, or?
No, this is a little...
No.
The question was, uh, whether or not there's a reorganization at the first meeting held in December and then again in January, or if it's just held in January, so...
I believe the resort, reorganization can occur either one of the two, but the chairman is chosen in January.
And that's what the paragraph was stating, yeah. What is that?
Hence part of the...
Yeah, 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 right. I know, we got off, we got off course here.
I think the reorganization would begin December. Chairman is picked in January. We'll get some over here.
You know, but a pickup's like three and a half ton.
Yeah, cause nowhere near.
So we changed all our one and a half? I hope so. Yeah, for that, yeah.
Yeah.
Arguing with Liza, whole school.
And also Wayne.
I'm training them well.
Whole new meeting then.
Whole new meeting. Or is it...
Right, true.
You get to send a lot of tickets.
It's in, it's in, it's in January.
Yep. Yep, they have to. Yep. Yep, so that way they're all accurate, if somebody disputes something.
Pretty valid, probably number one of these one thing.
Then, as my state's attorney, bring it out to me. Go by his... Or we can go on our own and then your Christmas line. But we go like, here's what can you... We as a commission cannot be sued if we go with those. Even if it's all... So there.
Are you sad?
Well, I am. Usually I need to find something in the W R T that I can, so.
You're hanging on to this one.
I was just didn't pick up my hand, that's all.
For many years I've been on that one. Right?
Is your, to the S I claim still?
It's pending. Right. We need a tip. We gotta go check the gym.
Gotta call it to Jim about this.
Are we all supposed to bear witness for that?
Depends on how big the grant is.
Was it a paying for a ranch hand?
Yeah, ranch. Hands.
Hands.
So what would happen if we don't bear? We don't want to know, right?
Yeah, I think you don't have electricity anymore.
Come on, Joel. There might be some.
I don't know.
I used to.
Reorganize once the new commissioners take office too, which is not going to be the first week of December. But then you have to do it again, yeah.
Stuffer than you think.
Oh, that was back in the eighties. We'll probably see you at P L Z P and Z. My, that's if I. I should throw it right. If I show up. See, see what Cindy.
No, you don't get that X seven effect.
No, no. I thought you should have brought that sample on. Cindy made up my P and Z application.
He's Sam. On the horizon one for candy, just so you know, there's no numbers written on it.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I already.
It's pretty interesting. Holy smokes, who took the ten to read all those serial numbers down? Legitimately. Fine point pen. I never checked, but I hope the bills are all in order when we give it to you. Not at students' home.
He has to reorganize. He's gonna keep track of this.
Stay out of the school if you organize.
I don't, I don't know if he's gonna go that way. Right? It is. Yeah.
Yeah.
Which you gotta do.
Those were the territory. When you sit on the end, that's it.
So the tail wakes, the dog is not wakes.
Hopefully retired.
Won't wake so well. It's just me.
I just wanted to know how and order to build starting to get down to Gene there.
Yeah.
What he's whipping around.
We're wa- we're watching him.
I haven't been watching him. I don't.
Yeah, you're sitting right there.
Yeah, we said it's all.
Is this kind of thing going on and then, yeah.
In this instance, it's the anchors fault.
Poor Gwen, she sits in the hall.
Making sure it's all good and then she gets a bad. Commissioners.
I wanted to insert one on that W R T.
I'm looking.
I looked.
You couldn't find one either?
I could not.
I did pass today.
Now, what's this one for Wayne Enzie?
Right?
Just make sure the. All right. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Jean to approve the bills as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Next up, we got zoning wind ordinance signature page.
Yeah, when you guys had adopted the ordinance and on August third, I had forgotten to give them the signature page, so we had to make a motion to accept it with the signature page because it has to be dated for today, the signature page.
Because that's when we're actually signing it.
When did it become effective then?
August third.
Okay.
And it's dated August third and it says on here, the document with Travis's help. The document was formally adopted on August third, 2022 by the commission. There was no signature page prepared at the time of adoption, therefore the signature page is dated for the date the commissioners actually signed the document.
So we just need a motion to approve the signature page?
Correct.
I saw moved to approve the signature page for our wind ordinance.
Okay. Motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Thanks for catching that Cindy.
What am I signing here?
This is your life away.
She read it to you, Wayne. You gotta slip it in.
That's the usual comment.
Like being at home.
That's the usual comment. Shut up, Lisa.
Dan, you're notary, right?
Oh, no. I don't know. It is a notary.
Well, if it's for the benefit of Cindy, she can't notarize it this way. We need to fill Dan in. I can't notarize it because I have to sign it. Okay. You're notary, right?
So we got the.
You're notary, right? Okay.
I got you guys covered.
We just told Wayne that he was signing over his house. We just needed a notary.
And I know Ashley's in love, so. When you get that finalized, will you send me the official? I knew you'd need a retirement home, so. Well, when you get so far west, you know, you might have your camp for a while, so there.
All right, um, we got a list of, that's all you have Cindy, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. List of other business. Just want to go down the line? We got, or do we wanna?
Let's pick and choose. Pick the easy ones. Number three would be pretty easy. We got time for that.
Okay. Let's do the, talk about the twenty-one, twenty-two audit.
There are two estimates presented in your guys' paperwork. One's from the state and one's from.
I'd Bailey.
Yeah. Did I miss something or are we moving to yearly audits instead of?
No, we are not at this point.
Okay.
I'd Bailey only submitted for one yearly.
Yours, yours.
All right.
And so I was confused. I'm like, are we moving to?
No. We sent out a request for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two audit.
Right.
That's all we've sent and this is the answer.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Do we have to make a decision today?
Both of them are really have already begun, yeah. Discussing with other counties and have already started their list and so it's getting really full, so they would like to know sooner rather than later. Because they are, they're already really busy.
Mr. Chairman, Board, for discussion. I move that Mr. Conde accept the proposal from the North Dakota State Auditor for former twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two audit.
Motion by Marv to accept the estimate from the state auditor for our audit of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal years. Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? For discussion, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Travis. The reason I recommend that is because they performed our last one. And some continuity and follow through I think is very valuable. And also I'd Bailey, from what I read, they submitted one for a one-year financial statement between thirty and forty thousand. And the state was between thirty-four and thirty-eight thousand for a two-year. So it's a. It looks like the most bang for our buck. And we have some continuity and follow through from the audit performed last year. I'd Bailey would have to go back and look at everything that the state did and the cost would possibly be up. That's why I recommend the state.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion on the audit services? Seeing none. Marv?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
I'll vote aye.
All right, that motion passes. Samantha, if you could contact state auditor and get us on their list.
I will do that.
Thank you, everybody.
What would we like to tackle next?
Well, the care and COVID ARPA funds, those reports won't take very long. It's up to you though.
Let's talk about the care and COVID ARPA funds.
Okay. Board, I'd like you first to look at the handouts that I gave you on the COVID revenue expense. And this is after going through all of the revenue and expense reports that I could find on our reports. It shows in when we received each one of the allocations. The total we received is a hundred, one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. I rounded up to the nearest dollar. It shows where these funds went. One thing that I'd like to point out in the twenty-one, twenty-nine asset forfeiture fund, which is our Siren expense. Our board moved to approve five hundred thousand dollars to be put in that fund. And apparently, and I'm not sure why, but we only got in four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six point four four. So. So this is just a report showing what occurred. And per this report and all the expenses that I can find to date, we have in our general fund at the end of twenty twenty-one, we had seven hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and six cents. That carried over into our twenty twenty-two and then into our twenty twenty-three, so it actually is into our general, it's still in our general fund. So the only question I have on this one is I would like to receive an answer via email or however they want to do it. Being as we approved five hundred thousand dollars for Siren, it appears only four hundred and ninety-five, eight eighty-six, forty-four made it there. I would like to know why the difference is not there. This is mostly just for your information. One thing I will point out is that if we didn't have that seven hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars left in our general fund from COVID, we would not have been able to meet our general fund expenses in twenty twenty-three. Because that amount equals about thirteen point six mils. We would have exceeded our mill value. It was meant to go into our general fund, but not for stuff that was already budgeted. So that's just my report. That's all I have on the COVID. And I would like to receive that information. There's most likely a very good explanation why that extra money didn't make it in there, that four thousand, two hundred and some dollars. I'd just like to have that explained to me.
Okay.
Next report, is there any questions?
Nope. Any question?
Okay, the next one is the ARPA money. And I double checked with the state. They helped me out. And verified these numbers that we received, one million, five hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And from the minutes that I have copies of, here we approved a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents to the landfill. And I'll show this to you Travis because that's the minutes. You made the motion. So that's where I got it from. If there's additional information, I want that back by the minute. If there's additional information, I want to receive that, but that's all I can find. And the building and improvements for Core Solutions was approved and that was one million, nine thousand, nine hundred and nine, twenty-five dollars and ten cents for the records that I have. So using the information with what I was able to access, we have committed one point two million roughly of the one point six that we received, I'm rounding. But using the information I have available, we have about four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents left in ARPA money. And that should be in fund twenty-one oh four, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, twenty-one oh four. Okay. Now, the question, one of the questions I have regarding this is on the expense report for twenty-one oh four ARPA funds. Year to date, it shows we spent three hundred and ten dollars and seven hundred and thirty-six. Seven, three hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. It's listed underneath miscellaneous. Miscellaneous is coded. For myself, we're supposed to keep track of our ARPA expenses. These are not miscellaneous expenses. I would like to see them listed specifically rather than any miscellaneous. When you pull up miscellaneous on our tax and financial software, it'll pull up the miscellaneous in every single department and total it. So. Anyhow, that's my ARPA report there. I think that's all I have regarding those two. One other question on these here. Oh. Regarding these two, I would like to receive, again via email, however is easiest, a list of all of our contracts for twenty twenty-two. The expected costs for each of them. The expenses to date for each of our contracts. And which funds those expenses came out of. I think that's just a really good exercise for the board to, at the end of the year, to go back and review all of our contracts. How much was paid and where the money came from. And that's why I'm requesting that. That's all I have on the COVID and ARPA.
Okay.
And I did submit copies of those to our auditor and to each of you, so. if you want to call or email, no problems. I'm glad to go over it with you.
Okay, anything else on that?
No, sir.
All right. Let's do the landfill improvement cost.
I did.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to reach through my memory banks here. Oh, I just wanted to verify that number that I just showed you, Travis.
Oh, okay.
One sixty-eight. I wanted to verify that that was actually all that we
We expensed on it?
Yes.
Okay.
And is that bill all paid?
For the landfill?
Yeah, I think we did that a couple of months ago.
I asked that question before, and I'm certain, but that'll come up with the information. So that's all I had regarding that, so I included that with my ARPA deal there, that the motion was made for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, whatever that number was, so.
Okay.
A hundred and sixty-eight, seven forty-seven, forty. All right, that's all I had for that.
Okay, tax and financial software?
Tax and financial software is for you guys to choose. All I did is I wanted to let you know that I provided a report from the state showing all of the different softwares that all the different fifty-three counties are using throughout the state. When we set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this software, not too long ago, a couple of meetings ago, I recommend that this gets moved sooner than later. Our county's been without tax and financial software that reports match for over seven years, and that you choose one. And when you do choose one, I recommend that you have some type of specification. And the only specification that I can think of off the top of my head is that it be Windows compatible. Don't buy a program that is not. Some of these are, I've had reports in the past, you guys, there's some of these are dated, they don't have new versions, they don't have the technical support anymore. They're just old programs. And a lot of these counties are moving away from them. So that's all I had. I gave you a report showing what all the other counties have. I recommend that we use something that's Windows compatible. That's all I have for that.
Custer Health Board?
We're walking right down the line, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay. I am presently on the board for the Custer Health. Erin has asked me to check whether the county requires a county board member to be on that board. I don't think that it does. Per the information she sent me, I am still valid to be on that board till twenty twenty-five, and she would like me to stay on that board. That's your guys' call. So that's going to fall underneath your recommendations of boards meeting in December. But I want you guys aware that I enjoy being on that board. They do a really, really good job. And Erin would, for some continuity, again, the same reason, that I stay on that board.
In your terms, you said through twenty-five?
Up to, her letter said to twenty twenty-five. I did not check that.
Okay, so possibly the end of twenty-four. I'm just wondering when we'd have to
Yes, the end of twenty-four.
Okay.
And I'm requesting to stay on that board.
Okay. Okay.
And when we get down to here, we'll talk about another board.
Yep. Museum venue?
Correct. So Lonnie Myhoff called and asked if we were wanting to hold our last commission meeting of the year at the museum in Beulah. So that's going to be yours.
Who called?
Laney Myhoff, Lonnie?
From the museum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, we hold that every year. There is kind of a way for the public to be there and for us. I would recommend that we do it. That's my thoughts.
The only thing I asked her to put on the agenda was so that we could properly notify the public that we'd have a change in venue. That, you know, so if somebody wanted to come to that last meeting in December, they wouldn't show up in Stanton, and we're all in the museum. So more or less a thing to do a motion that we'll do it there, and then it can be reported in the paper, you know, through our minutes and our normal publications, and put it on the website, just so that it was formally notified that everybody had the ability and knew that it was going to be not in Stanton that day if we still chose.
For that information, I move that we hold our last meeting of the year at the Beulah Museum Center.
Okay, motion by Marv to have the December twenty-first meeting at the museum in Beulah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion?
It's closer for most.
Oh. Okay, any other discussion?
And you got good cookies. Very good.
Anything else, Wayne?
They got, you may want to bring your chair. They kind of got the old-style chairs, but it keeps you awake, so.
Keeps you awake. They have
Oh, no, never. No, no way, no way. They get more than one oven.
We'll call up Wayne if we need some cookies. Any other? All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Wayne, I don't know if I want your answer.
Oh, I'll, I'll. I think I'll vote aye.
Okay. I'll vote aye. My motion passes. The December twenty-first meeting will be held at the museum in Beulah. All right, we got time here.
Now I got to remember to show up there.
Yeah, yeah. Send Jean a specific.
Three of them.
A reminder. Should I call him the two, Jean, or what?
Text him, email, and Twitter him, all of the above.
Right. All right. Reorganizational meeting in December. Just so everybody's aware, well, you were kind of passing out the rules, so.
I was not.
Well, Jean was, but some of those specifics, like, Jean, if you want to highlight kind of what, I know there was, I could hear something about the chair and then something about positions and stuff like that, so.
Well, we need our state's attorney to tell us what the way he would interpret it, but essential code eleven, eleven oh eight says the chairman, at the first meeting of the board of county commissioners each year, the members of the board shall select their new chairman. And so that would be, you know, after January first is when that normally gets done. So there, my question would be, by reading this, that got added to the agendas, so what reorganization would we do in December? Because typically, we just do a chairman and a vice chair.
Portfolio.
Portfolios.
Portfolios.
Because after the last election, when we were elected.
Just to make sure I'm not throwing off the memory, which is like a checkbook, it's in every way you want it.
Okay, I thought you meant reorganization of the board. Sorry.
Well, the board and also the portfolios.
Portfolios?
Portfolio assignment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, we can do that whenever. Exactly.
Right, because after the election with new members, obviously, new members have to be assigned portfolios. And I'm glad you brought up the chair, because I think the last time we did it, we elected chair and vice chair, and then we voted on it again in January. But if we can go to January, the way we're at, fine, if we want to reorganize, I'm fine with that, too. But I just wanted to bring up the fact that it would be nice, Sam, if you could send out all the current portfolios, and then also copy new commissioners on that, so everybody's aware of what portfolios are available. And kind of like we did the last time, if there's any perceived conflicts for commissioners on certain boards, we would like to avoid those if at all possible. Just so. Sometimes worse than a conflict is a perceived conflict on boards.
Okay, I have a comment when you're done.
You go ahead, Marv.
Regarding the portfolio assignment and being on boards, I'm not going to be a commissioner when this meeting occurs, the next meeting in December. I am presently the commissioner representing the board on planning and zoning, so that's going to have to be replaced. Okay, but I want to mention that there are also positions on planning and zoning for persons, for people at large, not being on the board. I'm serving right now on a committee there with our solar ordinance and have been one of the main authors of it. In fact, I have it in our legal department now, so hopefully she could type it for us, and it'll it's not being typed, but it's there. Do you, go ahead.
Handing it to my secretary in order to prove it is not putting it in my hands, and I'm not prepared for this time to be having the commissioner direct my staff as to what to do. I've got other things to do right now. I will look at it with the new commissioner once it comes out.
I'd like to clarify that. Number one, I did not hand it to his staff ordering her to do that. I sent an email expressing that I'm not very good at Word on putting the spacings in and so forth, and asked if she would have time to type it up so that I could present it more professionally to the planning and zoning, and she volunteered to do so.
Okay.
Okay, I disagree, but that was the conversation that she and I had at that time. It's not being done, okay? I'm prepared to send it to the, and I talked to her this morning. There wasn't any disagreement there. And I said, no worries, I'll present it to the board, the planning and zoning, as I have it typed up. It's not too bad. I'm just not as professionally adept at making the inventations and the notations that someone is more proficient at Word than I am. That's all I wanted, was it be, not to be reviewed, not for accuracy, just to get it typed up in a way that might read easier. Format, word format. So anyhow, what I want to say is that I'm presently, that solar ordinance is not done. I'm one of the main authors on that, myself and Mike Esslinger are on the committee. If we, however you guys want to choose, I would recommend that if there's a position at large, that you would consider myself to be on the planning and zoning board.
Okay, we'll have the new commission review that after the reorganization.
And say you have to have an application as well.
Yeah, I believe, we always handle those with an application, so Marv, if you're interested, please fill out an application.
Okay.
And then we can consider it.
Is there a formal application or?
Yes.
Yep.
Would you please send that to me?
I can.
Is that your mic down there?
That's fine.
Not at all.
I thought it was mine. I moved mine quick for a little while. Speeding down when I'm being back.
Anything else on reorganization? I'm trying to think if there's
Just a couple of things.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Tom.
What you brought up, Jean, eleven, ten, oh five says, except as otherwise provided by the laws of the state. Otherwise provided is eleven, ten, oh five, oh one. It says that the commissioner's term ends on the first, or begins on the first Monday in December, succeeding the election. All right? So that gets back to the next meeting is our reorganization. So Marv is absolutely correct. This is our last meeting as a commissioner. I don't, I don't have the election results memorized. I don't know who's going to be with the commissioner, who's not. But there is an issue that has come up that I have taken delivery of research. We have one person who did win the election. That's Jamie.
Bulck?
Oh. I was wanting to say Fuller, knowing that's wrong. All right. Jamie is the county health nurse under the sheriff's department. Okay, when I first see that, my initial gut reaction is, oh, this needs further investigation. So it's something, Aaron Burst had sent some AG opinions, and then I worked off of those. Then went to the cases that are cited. We have a nineteen seventy-five case, which is more recent, that has dealt with this issue, is Tarpville versus the old school, public school district number one. In that case, a teacher got elected to the school board. And North Dakota Supreme Court said no. They gave us some guidance that allows me to analyze the situation, because they've told us it's going to be a case-by-case basis. So what we have to do is analyze this under the guidelines, two-part test that the Supreme Court gave us in Tarpville that is cited in a letter opinion by the then Mercer County Sheriff, pardon, excuse me, Mercer County State's Attorney, July sixth, two thousand six, July twenty-four, two thousand six. The opinion is two thousand six, L twenty-one. In that opinion, they quote Tarpville, and you've worked with me long enough to know that when I see a quote, I go check it. That's why reading these books that are citing all kinds of sources takes me forever, because I read them like a lawyer. I check the resources. And they're lying about the resources across the book. And here, it's accurate. So we've got to look to see if the two positions are incompatible. The question that I'm researching and prepared to give my opinion on today is whether or not the two jobs are in conflict, working as the county jail nurse and being a county commissioner. Now, in the circumstance, in the letter opinion from back in two thousand six, you had a landfill operator who was directly supervised by the commission at that time wanting to run, to be a county commissioner. And under that two-part test, no, you'd have to choose one or the other. The two-part test says, and it's cited two different ways, but it means about the same thing. Is one position subordinate to the other? Let's analyze that. It's a two-part test. You got to leave pros prompts, or it doesn't apply. The county jail nurse serves at the pleasure of the sheriff. The commission has no control other than the sheriff's budget as to what her salary, work hours, work conditions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are going to be. So it's not a supervisory role as a commissioner over the county jail nurse. Second problem of the test is if there's many conflicts of interest between the two, such as salary negotiation, supervision, control of duty's obligation. So I can say, having researched this, spent some time with Collins, spent some time with Dean, spent some time with Terry, as to what Jamie's duties are. I've also spoke with Jamie. The commission wouldn't know in the regular course of its assigned duties what her job entails, other than what you're told by the sheriff. The sheriff can actually own the rule of the county nurse, the health nurse, or the jail nurse. Not a good idea, mind you. And my advice would be follow your nurse. Her actions are governed by two bodies. The duly-elected sheriff and the nursing board. If a commissioner or a commissioned order or ordinance told her to do something that the sheriff or the nursing board would say no, you don't get to do that. Because of that separation, I don't think the first part of the supervision as explained applies. Since the first part doesn't apply, the second part of the actual day-to-day, what are the conflicts? If the commission were setting individual salaries for individual sheriff's department employees, we'd have potential for conflict. And then we get down to it that when it comes to sheriff's department budgets, we have a commissioner would have to abstain at times from those votes. Here's the deal. The voters chose this person to be a commissioner. We don't override the voter's choice. So I'm telling you, I don't believe under the test setup under Tarpville, it's further analyzed by Attorney General opinion, and there are a number of them. There's one that Harretson sent that has no application, because there was a specific statute. Besides the circumstance that happened, that one no longer exists, because you don't have county commissioners. Most applicable is the one that Jim Johnson requested, all six. Looking at the case law, I'm telling you, I don't believe there's a conflict that would prohibit the jail nurse from also the jail nurse from also serving on the county commission. And I wanted to bring that to the commission's attention today because we're going to be reorganizing next meeting. And I just want to get that clear so we don't have any problems with it there. As I reform you, the commission follows the state's attorney's advice. And I'm wrong, you still keep your immunity. If you disagree with me and don't follow my advice and you're wrong, you can look at personal liability. This is very, very fresh on my mind because yesterday I did the civil liability and established constitutional law with two of the jailers of the sheriff's department. It's still going through my head. I mean, I've been teaching that class since nineteen ninety to officers, correctional officers. But I see no conflict for Jamie to be both.
Thank you, Todd. I appreciate that opinion. Jamie's in the audience, congratulations.
I didn't know you were going to bring it up.
Well, that's the best way.
Yeah.
I did talk to Jamie about what her duties are, who she answers to. And she answers to two people, the sheriff and the board of nursing. And the commission doesn't have any authority to order another elected official to do something. The commission has a duty to provide adequate budgets so they can fulfill their duties. And frankly, folks, one of the things that needs to be included is adequate funding to have a jail nurse. I won't mention the county, but they had a circumstance where a sheriff didn't get to hold medical personnel. Very rudely indicated this guy's just faking, transported into another county for their wants. He's not even developed a person who's going to be in that jail. He'd had somebody like Jamie there who would have told him, no, this guy's in serious medical distress. He shouldn't be going to the other county. He should be going to the hospital. And he had to cost that county. And that sheriff. More than my.
Okay. And just for clarification, when we've had possible conflicts, regardless of what it is, you know, the other commissioners could ask that commissioner to abstain and step aside. So if those are encountered, you know, whether it's directly to the sheriff's budget or what have it.
If it's going to be happening every meeting, well then that second part of the test is major conflicts. That might create a problem, but it isn't both problems. You've got to have the supervisory and too many conflicts. On the surface, when I looked at this, I thought, no, maybe she'd have to choose. But, well, I'm a kind of a truth-making kind of guy with things that I know. So I, Mark, I didn't know this absolutely, so I researched it. By the way, I reached this conclusion last week and let Sam and Jamie know, but I was not issuing an official opinion until I got a chance to think it through a little more and make sure I'm not missing. Eli Gilbally girl, be for sure, for sure.
And I have one more.
I dated us, Marv's smiling, I dated him too.
I have one more question and then we can, we can move on from this topic. But as her position as the nurse and as a county commissioner, how do we direct her compensation for both positions?
Well, you don't direct her compensation for.
For the nurse and then whatever the commission.
Same as with the deputies. And one thing that after the election, sheriff, and I've diagnosed him, having been a sheriff longer than almost anybody else in the department, maybe the longest serving continuous that I know of, he did something that might have ruffled some feathers, but he's completely within his rights. And he's doing it because he's seen transitions. That as soon as a new sheriff is elected, it causes turmoil in the department. So what Dean did is he issued a letter indicating that all rank was suspended. Everybody on his command and his staff is back to just being a deputy. He did preserve three. Terry, Mark was the head of investigations, and Colin. And Colin's been here longer than anybody else. Colin is the jail administrator, is part of his duties. Everybody else, the uniformed officers are just deputies. This allows the new sheriff to determine what rank. He can go right back to what the previous sheriff did, but it gives incoming sheriff the ability to have a smoother transition. An opportunity for a smoother transition. I'm thinking of other circumstances where everything is done. And I will tell you that Dean's original letter, I looked at it, the wording concerned me, so I advised him as the state's attorney. No, that looks like you're fired, everybody. And it was not my intention. So he did reword it, send it out, and amended one with him. So if you get that, and that's part of what we're talking about here. Sheriff, the current sheriff could promote somebody to colon status like Colin. The new sheriff is not bound by that. The new sheriff would come in and say to Jamie, I've got somebody else that wants to do this job. So that takes away the command and control, as they put it, law enforcement terms from the county. And that is, that has been litigated multiple times. Sadly. I like it where the elected officials can all work together.
Just on that, also on that note though, with combining or having Jamie with, for the two positions, as we know and been discussing a lot lately too, that our software is not set up to compensate wages for the two different positions and then also contribute to purse. So we're going to have to get creative in that aspect too and probably have discussion on how we work that out.
That was more the direction of my question.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm telling you what's legal. And what's legal and was legally required and permitted don't always match up with the scheme. But I think we can work something out on that. It's just a matter of getting it entered properly to do it.
Yeah. And I'm not afraid of that or have an issue with it. I just want to do it correctly so we don't have any issues. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Yeah, we've already determined how to do that correctly in practice. Now we've got to figure out how to do it again.
Okay. Sounds good.
I think I could have chose better words.
Thanks, Todd. Let's move on to road issues. We got Charlie and Ken.
There are very few people there.
You got that.
You can say all kinds of things.
Morning, Charlie.
Morning.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well. How's everybody else doing?
Oh, they're doing pretty good. For a win, they were doing. This must be the final, huh?
This is the final.
She's in my office right now. She's the emotional square.
Thank you.
You're back?
I'll read it for you.
Sorry, I didn't.
I'm just grabbing. I don't pick on the other ones, I don't like them.
Well, I'll remember that. What I handed out is actually for the second item. So the first item listed covert quotes. Some recent development, I guess, on that front, having conversations with the state. We are, we were preparing ourselves to move forward with the consideration of early procurement of box culverts for these federal aid jobs, and I was made aware that that is not allowed. And the reason that that is not allowed, per my conversations with Brian Fuchs at the DOT, he said, it's not the state, the state, we're not telling you you can't do it. The Federal Highway Associations are, they're the individuals that are against that. And I guess their reasoning for it is fairness and opportunity during the bid bidding process. They don't want to create a situation where, you know, the county develops a relationship with a vendor, manufacturer, somebody that they really like because of price or quality of a box or whatever their opinion may be. That is, in their eyes, the problem. It's an opinion and it's a relationship where it creates an unfair environment for different vendors to bid or be involved in projects and succeed, I suppose, on their own endeavors. No different than an engineering firm with a, when you guys utilize federal aid funds to pay an engineer for our services, you're required to bid that out, request a proposal, I shouldn't say bid it out, but request a proposal and interview different firms and select at that point. So our conversations that we had at the association of the counties with Brian Fuchs have shifted. And Brian's been great through all this. I don't, I'm not trying to paint a bad picture for them either. They really has been. It's working with us and helping us understand what we can and cannot do. And we're just going to have to shift gears at this moment in time and try to keep moving forward with it, packaged and bundled as it is. So the covert quotes, I didn't even bring them with me today because it's a moot point. And here we, here we are. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
So we have to wait till March now, twenty twenty-three.
Whenever the bid is done.
The contractor will be responsible for the opinion we're probably going to have right now. It'll be awfully similar in nature to the John Shields Bridge, as we're calling it. That, that project, the bid opening was early April. They got their box October twentieth. So they have the, just an update on that, I guess, since I touched on it. They have that contractor Schwartz, Edward Schwartz Construction, that won the bid there. They have the box covert with the snow on the ground and the way the contract's set up. They're not going to begin work this year for obvious reasons. But if they would have gotten it a little sooner, they might have gave it a, gave it a go.
They had factory movement to put a snow get to the dirt.
No, it was, it was a thirty-day working contract with the option to, to complete the work in twenty twenty-three, should their, should their box not be made available. So he called, he called me on the phone and he said, he asked if there's any way we could work around that. And I said, unfortunately, our hands are tied. This is a federal aid project and the contract's written in the manner that it is. You have until November fifteenth, which was yesterday, to get it done or else you started, you know, accruing, I want to say it was two thousand dollars a day in liquidated damages or something to that effect. So they, knowing that, they quickly elected to not begin working this year. That and problems with temperatures and snow.
Now, here's the problem. He's pointing it out, this is from a legal standpoint. As you notice, we don't get a ton of bids for these types of projects when we got federal matching and chicken in the nerve, cleaned it up. Rules, regulations, what you've got is you've got some bureaucrat who's never looked at anything other than a computer drawing as far as engineering, who doesn't know how to use a calendar for the North Country. I've seen this all across the North Country, from Washington to Maine, every place in between. The feds are mandating crap so it ends up starting projects in October and November. Now, we've had years where we can punch holes. I grew up in construction, so I understand these frustrations. I want the commission and the taxpayers to understand. No, our commission isn't saying, let's start road build, road construction in October in North Dakota. You got the feds who are doing this. They get an idea in their head that has no logic backing it, and then we have these problems. I realize I'm venting, but you knew what you were getting when you hired me.
Now you're elected.
Until January, stroke of impact.
All right.
But here's the deal. We're going to run into these problems. Because we've got federal bureaucrats who are going unchecked and unreasonable. It puts these contractors in one pickle year after year after year. And more contractors, medium-sized contractors are not doing these projects.
Yeah, it is quit.
Because they don't have the size, resources and abilities to absorb this extra garbage cost. So my voice from a legal standpoint to change this, to talk to the three people that don't go to San Francisco, this has got to come to land.
Yeah, the only real option we have at this point, if this is simply unsatisfactory to the commission as it stands today, would be to move forward with this project without any sort of federal aid funding, which I, I mean, I'm not in your guys' shoes. I'm assuming we don't have the means to do, but you know, that would be the only way around this. Then we would be, have the ability to procure a box if we so choose to. And hire a contractor, bid a, bid out a, a contract on our own accord and let them start building it in May or June or whatever, you know. That would be our only option. But I'm, you know, I'm going to assume we don't have that ability. So it, it's a, it's a double, and I agree with everything Todd was saying too. It's, it's difficult, but I mean, you know, it's, it's money that's being made available to us. So I understand why we, you know, we go down the path that we go down. It's just, it's difficult to manage this stuff when on top of it, you have issues with inflation rates and supply chain issues and things being the nature that they are today. It's just kind of tough.
So, so what was the estimated bid? It was like two point eight million for the whole project?
No, 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 for this, for this south of the crossroads, the box one thirty-four twenty. Eight hundred and fifty thousand is the engineer's estimate for construction costs. The box itself, we had quotes anywhere from two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the boxes.
Right.
That's where things stood. So we, we thought, okay, maybe we'll help control bid costs as well if we procure this box. And clearly a contractor is going to look at this and go, wow, half the battle's fought. I already have the material, I can just, this opens up my schedule a lot. I can be competitive with that.
Yeah, I think most of us understand why we did it and I don't, and we have nothing wrong with that. What, I mean, I asked to kind of have it tabled just because of the sticker shock between the two estimates to let people think about it. And I'm glad we did now. If we do choose to go with, then it throws out federally on a project. So.
Correct. And we already, we were already awarded that through application. So it would be, to be honest with you, I've never went down that road before where we were awarded or allocated, I should say, money. And then we.
Then have to reject it.
Yeah. I'm assuming we have the ability to do that. I don't know why, we're not forced to take the money, yes, but it would just be unique to me. I've never done that before.
Yeah, the point I'm getting at is like, if we're going to stay with federally, then we need to have a motion to reject all bids on it. Just so that it's formal and we can tell.
Reject the quotes for the boxes.
Reject the quotes for the boxes. Just, just for formality so that.
Sure.
They know that, hey, we can't do it.
You would know that better than I. To me, this was just a question of what do you think it would cost? So I found out. I don't know if they're expecting, and if these vendors are expecting award or, you know, of anything at all. They just provided a quote.
Well, I understand they provided a quote, but I think from this board's perspective, it would be.
Sure.
In our best interest to say, hey, we appreciate the quotes, but we can't because X, Y, Z. Or, yes, we'll go down that road. But I mean, I'm just looking for kind of the commission's direction. Do we want to stick with trying to get the federal aid? And then if so, then we have to formally probably say no to the quotes.
And I'll, I'll, I'll make a statement on that as well. I, I think it's the county's best interest to take the federal aid because it's free money.
It's eighty percent.
It's eighty percent.
Eighty percent free money. So for obvious reasons, that's a big one, right, alone? But I certainly understand if you, this, this bridge has been closed for over a year. And I understand there's folks that are frustrated about that. And I, I share the sentiment with Todd on that. It's difficult, it's, again, it's not the commission saying, we're not going to build this because we don't have, you know, we, we just want to frustrate folks. It's, our hands are a little bit tight on this stuff too. It's just the way it is.
From a legal standpoint, rejecting an eighty percent match on a project this size. From a legal standpoint, rejecting an eighty percent match on a project this size would be null and easy by the commission. It does open up some legal things that I don't wanna deal with, folks. I mean, I'll fight any battle I want to fight, but don't put me into battles that are unnecessary.
Unnecessary, yes.
There's a better word than it's coming to show us.
Avoidable. So.
Mister Chairman, this, this isn't the first time that this has happened. I mean, we had our structures down on fourteen that blew out and it took between two to three years to get that, finally, all the funding together to do it. And I, I mean sadly for the taxpayer, yeah, you aren't gonna drive across it. But as we just talked here, eighty percent match on this huge project, we just have no other direction to almost go.
And this doesn't constitute an emergency situation because there's alternative routes for commerce and folks to use. Now, the state, I think that, that, that's when things change. When the game can change, when it becomes an emergency situation, folks are boxed in, then that, then that changes things. But that's not the case with this one.
But kind of what's been talked about, we're as frustrated as, probably not as frustrated as the landowners adjacent to it, but we're frustrated in the whole process. But to kinda move forward, I guess, just for formality, I'd like a motion from the board either to accept the quotes or to reject the quotes just so we can move forward on that project.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to reject the quotes on the concrete box structures.
Okay, motion by Wayne. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Please notify the box culvert quote people that we're not gonna accept them. We can move on to that final payment, no?
Yep, moving on. We got Mercer twenty-six. We do have some good news on this one. This, what I handed out in front of you is the, it's progressive pay estimate number one. It's the final pay estimate. It's the first requested pay estimate. It just so happens to be the last. In the total amount of eight-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-dollar, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. You'll notice probably, I mean, you've already noticed this, what jumps out about that is it's well below the bid, the bid, uh, bid price cost of this project. The bid came in, I wanna say it was like nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand and some change.
It says it on top, contract cost, nine-hundred-and-eighty-five.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, sorry. Nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight fifty-six fifty-five. So, it's underneath the, the bid price by quite a large margin. And that doesn't mean that we got less mix on the road or anything like that. It's just, it has everything to do with how I choose to bid those projects at Interstate with, with the, at Interstate Engineering. We build in contingencies with our mix design and the oil that, the amount of oil that's bid, bid, and the contractors are aware of it. We, we got a really good product out there and we were able to come in under budget. So.
It's a lot nicer when you're kind of over, over the budget and the kind, and it came in under the budget.
Yeah.
And that, that helps out tremendously.
Yep. And that's, that's always the goal. Plus, it gives us some flexibility in the field. The contractors aren't perfect. You know, they might be shooting for two inches of mat, a two-inch mat that they're laying down and they're at two and a quarter or something. And if you don't have a good, a good technician in the field checking yield and telling them where they're at and staying on top of them, those types of projects can get out of control in a hurry, especially when the controlling bid item is the mix itself. So, that's why we choose to do it the way we do it. It worked out really well in this instance. Not all of them work out as well as this one. This one just happened to work out really, really well. We got a good product. We got a really good product out there. We actually went pretty heavy on the oil and we were still able to come in well under budget, so.
Uh, Chuck, do we have a retention, warranty retention or anything?
The, they're bound by contract to warranty it for a period of up to twelve months, one year. The re, the retainer that's on there, the five percent retainer, is released upon final payment of substantial completion, which we are, that's what I'm here for today. However, they are still bound by the contract to warranty this product for up to a year.
Okay, alrighty.
And if there, if, if there are any other questions, please ask. Let me know. I, I mean, as I'm just seeking approval from the commission to pay the contractor for this and we'll button it up and quote the project out.
Any other questions from the commission?
And you will notice the contractor has accepted and signed, so they reviewed it as well.
If there's no questions, I can entertain a motion to pay the Bechtold paving for pay estimate number one.
I still move.
Motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Wayne. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, let, let's make sure on that motion that we got the amount in there. It's eight-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
I wanna just comment, you, thank you guys for doing a nice job on this, uh, that, and thank Bechtold. They're, they're a good contractor and, and I think the public got a nice product out of this deal.
Thank you. I'll let them know for sure. And to piggyback too, I know we had some patching work that while Bechtold was in town.
Yeah, patch job for Jean over there.
Yeah, well, while Bechtold was in, in the area doing this work for us, we asked them to make three separate patches for us. One of them, one of which, of course, was on twenty-one that we're working, worked out that with a total of the other two being on Mercer fifteen and Mercer twenty-seven. We, we are not requesting payment on those today because I'm actually asking the contractor to review that. We have the numbers put together for it. I would imagine it'll come at the next meeting, but just an update on that. And strike in as well. That's a separate budget item that you guys have lined up for that. None of which has been spent this year. This will be the first out of that budget item that's gonna be spent. And that is also well beneath the budgeted item, or budgeted, no, for twenty-twenty-two. But regardless, we'll have that at the next meeting probably. And then, if there are no more questions, I'll move on to road project costs.
Okay.
Okay. I did have a chance to sit down with Marv yesterday. He stopped by and we kinda went through some of this some more. And we just reiterated some of the items that I brought up at the last meeting with regard to the twenty-twenty-two budget and the status of actual engineering projects and where they're at. And again, I think it kinda falls back on how we, how we ultimately ended up budgeting twenty-twenty-two versus what, you know, was actually being spent in twenty-twenty-two. And at the end of the day, we're, we're well beneath our budgets on all of our projects that we're working on. But as far as the, the budget, it reads itself and we kind of were trending over budget on twenty-twenty-two because of what was budgeted, I guess is probably the easiest way to put it.
The county budget.
The county budget, correct, sorry. So, you know, I have details that I can, I, I wanna know if there's questions on that or if people are, you needed clarity on that more or, because I can run through some of these numbers, Marv. I don't know how you wanted to handle this, but.
Do you mind if I just start?
Sure, go ahead.
And you can verify. We went through the projects in twenty-twenty-two and what the engineering costs are gonna be. And the reason I wanted engineering, and that includes construction and preliminary engineering costs. Now, most of the construction engineering don't occur, does not occur because we're not gonna get it done in twenty-twenty-two. So, that's not really an issue. What I see for the John Shields Bridge, per the numbers that we discussed, the preliminary engineering cost for twenty-twenty-two is a hundred-and-three-thousand.
That's total project costs. Some of that was spent in twenty-twenty-one. I found out the number for you, Marv. This was something.
Go ahead.
The number that was spent in twenty-twenty-two on that was thirty-four-thousand-one-forty-eight.
That saved us. Thirty-four-thousand, what?
One forty-eight.
One forty-eight.
That was in twenty-one or twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Look at that. A lot of that was spent in twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
So, I checked the twenty-twenty-two billings from Interstate to you guys on that project and now there's been total.
Okay, good. Then Mercer twenty-six, it shows from, I believe, I have fifty-three-thousand.
That number has risen to seventy-four-eight-seventy-two.
Pardon me?
Seventy-four-eight-seventy-two.
You guys might wanna write these down. We're gonna total these. And the crossroads, give me your number so that I don't need to keep saying the wrong one.
Crossroads box culvert one thirty-six, one hundred-and-thirty-six thousand.
A little different than what we talked about. It's fine.
I looked them up and since you texted me this morning, I got the latest numbers.
Okay, twenty-seven overlay?
Uh, eighteen-thousand-four-hundred.
Do you have the total of those four? Have you totaled those four?
And then also the general engineering number two.
Go ahead.
Uh, thirty-one-thousand-four-fifty-one. The total for all of those was three hundred, uh, let me look here. Three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-seven-twenty-three. I'll double check that for you. This is what happens when you do math on the fly.
What was that last general engineering cost?
Thirty-one-thousand-four-fifty-one and sixty-four cents, it looks like. We got about a month left on that. We budget twenty-five every year, so we're, you know, we're over on that, but. So, for the year, it's been, that we have spent three-oh-nine-eight-seventy-one, approximate. So, I didn't add all the cents in there.
And how much is, do we expect to pay to the remainder of the year?
I guess that, that, that part's a little hard, but I.
Shoot from the hip.
You know, if I had to assume, probably no more than twenty.
Okay.
We had a month left, so, because the, the big ones, that Mercer twenty-seven project.
I'm gonna give a round number. We have roughly three-hundred-and-ten-thousand that we're spending, we have already spent. We've got five, how much did you just say to go? Twenty?
About twenty-five.
So, three-ten, so that's at three-thirty?
Yep.
It doesn't matter, the small stuff, so. What I want the board to be aware of is that on our budget for twenty-twenty-two, we have two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars is in there. So, on our engineering costs, we're gonna be a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars over for twenty-twenty-two. That's some, that's gonna be reconciled.
So, to piggyback on that too, the actual project costs for all these projects, this is the hard part. For all these projects, yes, twenty-twenty-two budget, we're showing one-fifteen in the, to the wrong. But the actual project costs altogether are like three-hundred-and-seventy-eight, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand dollars. And the estimated costs are eight-hundred-and-fifteen. So, I mean, we're trending extremely, like well below. The problem is on twenty-twenty-two's budget, how that's shown is robust.
And the reason that the construction costs are way down is because they're getting budged out a year, a year, two later, right?
Yep.
So, that's why we're good. So, our, I just want, it's just information at this point, because we'll, we'll make the adjustments. The, I got it right in front of me here. The contractor budgeted for twenty-twenty-two was nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. And I'm not sure exactly where we're at with the total that we're, I got this eight-hundred-and-ninety-three on there, so.
That would be about it.
About eighty-eight thousand that we'll have to the good there. So, you take that eighty-eight off the one-fifteen, we're at thirty-five-thousand dollars over budget. And.
Well, then you have the patching budget as well. The nine-seventy is just for Mercer twenty-six.
Right.
The patching budget was an additional seventy-five-thousand-dollar contractor budget, of which we only spent about fifteen thousand.
And, and stripy.
Stripy.
So, at the end of the year, you guys will reconcile these numbers.
I think it's gonna shake out okay. We're gonna get, I'm gonna say, dare I use the word lucky with how it's gonna shake out. But in the, in the, for the twenty-twenty-two county budget purpose alone, the projects as a whole are in really good shape. You know, I mean, I feel really good about where we're at. I, I wouldn't say that if I didn't feel that way. So, it's just, it's gonna take, it's gonna be a matter of just making sure that I'm on the same page with you guys or with, you know, the road department when we're doing the budget to make sure that I provide these more accurately, I think is probably what needs to happen. This, we spent twenty-two versus twenty-three year going forecast.
Yeah, designed the year before.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, it's more of a, not, here's the total project. It's, hey, this much should be in your fiscal twenty-three. This should be in your fiscal.
We have it all broken out. We just need to.
To put it in the right fiscal years.
That's what I started to do this morning when I got lost.
Yeah, don't worry.
And then that's why you got the last minute email. But thanks again for those totals.
Yep.
And if the board's just cognizant of where we're at and we have a, a feeling, and you expressed this at our last meeting of a concern, so I just wanted to reiterate and say that we're fairly close.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree.
But we, okay, we have another issue, but what else do you got there?
That's it for the cons, I guess. So, if there's questions there, so then.
We, before, before we get done, we wanna talk about County Road seventeen Bridge.
Okay, would you like to discuss that? We can discuss that real quick before we jump into the maintenance agreement. That's fine.
Okay, let's do that. Go ahead, Charles.
So, yeah, um, we need, before December, because I believe December's the deadline. The county will have to work with the state on issuing, you guys will need to work directly with them on issuing an RFP for PE services is what it's called, preliminary engineering services. Basically fancy way of saying you need to, you need to ask people to submit a proposal for why they think they should do this design work for Mercer County. That's all it is. And.
We send that to DOT.
You send that to the DOT.
Okay.
Um, I never did email that to you, Marv, the process, because I had a heck of a time finding it, but I'll keep digging for it. So, the, there's a process to this, but really all it is, is there's a standardized template that the, the state will work with you on. Because as your, as a consultant, I, you know, I need to stay technically, not be a part of it. Um, conflict of interest because it needs to be a fair shake. So, you will work with the state to get, issue a RFP for engineering services on the Mercer seventeen bridge replacement project. And what I need to provide in this process, what I do need to provide as your consultant is a rough cost estimate and a map showing where it's at.
You provide it to us and/or the DOT?
Correct. I provide it to the Brian Fuchs and I can provide, provide it to the county.
Thank you.
So, those two, or that, I will take care of and I will make sure that I get that to you guys this, before Thanksgiving. I already have it done. I just need to get it.
So, we have to have it requested prior to the end of the month?
We have, you have to have it from, from the state?
We, we have to have it sent in for, to do the request for proposal before the end of the month?
No, you, I think you need to have it done before December, end of December, because the.
Oh, end of December. You said by December. You didn't say end of December.
Before the end of the fifth, their, their year, the fiscal year. Because, excuse me, they, the application would have to be submitted. I think the application deadline's in December.
Okay.
For the CBD fund. So, they're, what they're looking for is, uh, what was discussed, let me backtrack, at the Association of Counties with Brian Fuchs and, you know, Kent Leavitt and everyone at the state, was use of the CBD funds to perform the design engineering tasks, tasks associated with this project. There's no, it's no secret this bridge is problematic. It's posted at ten-ton because of their, their review of it. And we need to do a full bridge replacement due to the hydraulics that, I ran some preliminary hydraulics and the regression equations and everything show that this thing's gonna require a bridge. You can't put a box in here. It's gonna be cop-prohibitive. Just don't make boxes that big. So, that being said, and knowing what we know about the structure, in order to do the design, not, you know, make good use of these, these COVID funds, the CBD funds, that's as good as any. You could get the design done and have this thing pretty much shovel-ready. The problem is there's not gonna be any federal aid available until twenty-twenty-six. I don't know if you, we talked about this, I think, a couple of weekends ago now. So, that's not a guarantee. Funny, there things have happened. Projects have fallen through and reallocation of funds have occurred where the, you know, the state says. So, that's not a guarantee, funnier things have happened, um, projects have fallen through, and reallocation of funds have occurred where the, you know, the state says, well, this thing isn't happening now, who's ready to go? Let's, let's, let's kick a project through, and then they'll shift the dollars. And, uh, we, I think the county would be wise, just position themselves for something like that to happen, especially if they can utilize those CBD funds to pay for that to happen. And in essence, not affecting your bottom line, and it's gonna have things ready to go, you know, so, um, that's where we're, that's the direction we were kinda attacking and going with. But in order to get there, the county, uh, would have to work directly with the state, you know, usually someone within the road department, or a commissioner, or the, the, the road commissioner, or someone like that. So, you know, um, Brian Fuchs is the contact, and, and they'll help you with everything you need, but, um, after you get an engineer in place, and you have a consultant in place to start the design, then all the monies that you get for that, you then turn around and use to pay for those consulting fees. That's really the process, that's the, the dirt, you know, the quick and dirty of it, it's, I think the estimate was like one point two five million, total project cost, rough numbers, I'll have to add it after look. But, um, that included design and construction engineering fees.
Okay, so, uh, Sam, um, for the next agenda, we'll have to put that RFP on there, and then, um, once we get that ready, we'll actually have to pick a, a time that RFPs would be due, and then that gets posted through the DOT?
Correct.
And that's for the County Seventeen?
County Seventeen Bridge, yeah.
Bridge number, I believe, is twenty-nine dash one sixteen, dash twenty.
And please send to Samantha and Travis that template.
Okay.
For our, and myself if you want to.
Sure.
But they have to have it.
Yep, we have template, we, yeah, we can, I can share a template with you guys.
That's not a conflict, right?
I don't know why it would be, it's pretty standard.
You want me to contact Brian Fuchs and give it that way? Would that be cleaner? What's your thoughts?
I, I mean, I, I'm supposed to stay out of it, so, I don't know.
Can, can I do it? Okay.
Can?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's keep everything clean.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
And that's the update on that bridge.
Okay, thank you.
County maintenance agreement?
Um, the annual maintenance agreement, uh, needs to be turned or signed by you guys, it's just, uh, telling us that we're, or telling the DOT that we're, uh, maintaining our federal aid roads. And it's a yearly thing, um, so we sign it, they agreed today, sign it, and then it has to be into their office by December sixteenth. It's gotta be signed by the state's attorney, the auditor, the chair, and myself.
And then we need a motion to...
Yes.
To continue with the agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just got that email, what was it, last week?
Last week, you had sent it.
Got a whole lot of great timing and all those things, but...
Usually they send it a lot earlier, but...
Okay, is there a motion to continue with the county maintenance agreement?
Mr. Chairman also moved that we continue with the county maintenance agreement, I believe it's through, for the federal aid road system, right?
Current. Okay, motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Travis, whenever you get a chance to sign it, I'll do it.
I gave a copy to.
I'm gonna take a copy of his...
I'll make a copy and just send it to you, if that works?
That's for that new house, Travis.
Eva, okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Don't, it only takes one, though, see?
Okay, um, purchase of the dual swivel gearbox?
Uh, the swivel gearbox, it's a, it's a dual gear housing for that extension on our mower, uh, for the Schulte mowers, it is a extension. That is what's behind the tractor, which allows that, so the tractor doesn't have to go into the ditch, it's kinda like an offset deal. And, I mean, we used to be able to buy parts for those, but now they want you to buy the whole gearbox, can't buy just parts. And the total price, without shipping through Butler, is, uh, six thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. I have the money in my budget. Um, we are done mowing for this year, but, so it's ready for next year. The, the extension itself, I had asked Casey at Butler what they are, they're over thirty thousand dollars, and when we bought this, we paid twenty thousand dollars, that's how much stuff has gone up, so...
What was that number again for that?
Uh, six thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents.
Plus shipping?
Plus shipping, yeah, and I don't know where, Schulte comes out of Canada, so...
So, what, bearings bad, or worm gear?
The gears inside that housing. And like I say, it's the offset, because you got the, for the wing on there, and then for the actual, the mower behind.
Do they have like a warranty on it too, in case that...
That, uh, that, well, that's on the machine now, now, I mean, not that, no warranty existing, and when you buy the gearbox itself, I, I don't think so.
Gonna have to get a smaller shear pin. You must not get it from China.
Yeah.
So is this more information, or do you need a, a motion from us to...
Yeah, since it's over five thousand, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the purchase of the gearbox?
I moved to purchase the dual swivel gearbox.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion?
Any idea on what shipping will be?
I don't know, I'd say a couple hundred, three, less than five hundred bucks, I'm thinking, and then we, our guys will put it in ourselves, so...
Mr. Chairman, the motion was to approve the amount of money for the gearbox, do we wanna include shipping in that, or how do we wanna?
Okay, I made the motion not dictating a number, because I did not know what the shipping would be.
Yeah, he just said to purchase the gearbox, so that would include shipping.
All right.
Good, good question. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. RDO filter, what, go ahead.
For discussion, Gene had a good comment, there's, the motion's done, it's over with, and we're fine with it. In the future, I, I could have possibly said for approximate cost of seven thousand dollars. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, RDO filters?
Uh, they have their annual filter sale in November, RDO, and it's for all the hydraulic filters, the oil filters, um, fuel filters, for the four maintainers and the one loader, John Deere loader, so it comes in at five thousand two hundred and three dollars and ninety-three cents.
Just above our threshold?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the, um, purchase of RDO filters?
Some moved.
Motion by Gene, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none?
Can I have that amount again, please?
Five thousand two hundred and three dollars and ninety-three cents?
Okay, I just wanna make sure I wrote it down right.
Yep, yep. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Utility permit?
Uh, utili, utility permit seventeen forty-five, uh, dash two-two, it's from, I think it's Irvin, you might know him, Wayne, Irvin Mund, down there west of, uh, oh, Gl, uh, Glenn Schilling's parents' place.
Oh.
It's an estate, he's out of Bismarck, but what it is, is he wants to, he's got a well on the east side of the, that section line that runs north and south, he wants to, uh, get water to the west side there.
Oh, I was wondering if that wasn't some of that Art, Art Flemmer land?
Yeah, that's what it is, yep. So, it's just a utility permit, he's gonna do it next spring.
Okay.
But...
Okay, is there a motion to approve, uh, utility permit?
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, move the utility permit seventeen forty-five.
Okay, motion by Wayne to approve the utility permit seventeen forty-five, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion?
You didn't see any concerns about this permit?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else with the roads?
Um, we haven't had this much snow in a while, so I see a lot of, uh, pushing snow into the right-of-way, so I've been contacting a few people to kinda remind them, you know, they're pushing it and creating them high walls, so, um, other than that, I think we did pretty good for getting the amount of snow off. Seemed like a lot of the north-south roads were the, were the worst, um, but, and then we do have a new blade operator down, we had Jeff Nielsen's over in the, uh, south of Golden Valley District. Rod Sagan had retired, so... He's learning, that, you know, because there's a little bit of road here, road here, that he's not familiar with, so, but, we're getting it, so...
Just, just one, maybe one comment to refresh your operators, there are driveways, and they're kinda winging off, and they're coming through their driveway, and Mr. Farmer can, you know, we got enough trying to do livestock and stuff, and here she or he goes to work, and here's a three-foot wall over the driveway. And, uh, by God, I mean, uh, we're, we're pretty sparsely populated out there. Uh, back, stop that machine back up, drop that wing, go through, hit her again, clean his driveway off, and keep working. I mean, I know it's time, but by golly, it is unfair to have him go out there and, and clean the driveway, or turn your mower board, do whatever it needs, but... I had a few calls on that, so, uh, we wanna bone up these operators, how to do that, because your phone can ring as well as mine, you know? But, uh, we don't, we don't need to create a, uh, uh, an issue for, for those landowners, uh, the wife goes to work or something, she comes out there, and Christ here, she runs into this, you know, was gonna go through it, she didn't make it. And, uh, but there's a way of going about it to, to clean the, you know, the approach, so...
Yeah, we'll do the best what we can with what, you know, and when we got that much snow, that's a lot of snow too. So we'll do our best what we can, just like with Bismarck and then with their driveways and Beulah too, we get that snow in there.
But again, they didn't come around a second time, you know, so...
And they can call the shop too, no one called us yet, so...
Well, I just, I just, I just, I just ate, ate the bullet for you, so, uh, yeah. Well, just to remind them guys, there's a way...
They'll do what they can to minimize it, I guess, as much as we can.
There's a way they can do it to minimize it, and don't...
It all depends a lot on how much snow that we get too, because I mean, the more you get, the more it, it's tough, you know? Just like with Beulah snowgates and everyone else, six inches, and if it's more than that, you're fighting, and that's what snowgates, so...
But like I say, they can hit the brakes and back up and turn that mower board, drop that wing, I know it's a couple minutes, but hey, that driveway's clean, that guy paid for the machine, not me. Boy, I guess I did, so, uh, we have to remind, remember that too, and the other part is, you may have senior citizens, or you may have an ambulance emergency. Sure, it takes a little time today, but if you get called out at twelve o'clock to get an operator, uh, get that ambulance out, uh, it, it costed a lot more money, so, just a forewarning. Little prevention.
Anything else for roads? Okay.
Yes, I missed one.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Thanks, Charles.
Yep, thank you.
Let's take a short recess here.
He canceled it. That's our maintenance agreement. Our road maintenance agreement. He's gonna sign this part, so you can just take it with you.
Is there anything?
I do. Yeah.
Those are yours too. Thanks, Ken.
Mr. Envy, paging.
We all just stare at it, maybe he'll...
She's a paging, Mr. Envy. Ready, Wayne? Okay. Not a tear was shed.
No.
All right, I'll call this, uh, meeting of the Mercer County Commission back to order. We have, uh, two things left on the agenda, um, let's do that nine-one-one emergency manager position that was put on here.
I just put it on there, and it could be a little premature, and seeing what you guys' timeline was, I'm wanting to advertise the position.
So, um, Carmen, change is over April one, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, um, you can come up, Carmen, come up.
What I was hoping is perhaps we could advertise it, and, and have people, you know, for two weeks, and I'm talking like, next week or something, two weeks, and then have someone hired, ready to start January first, and then I'd have January, February, March to train with them. But here's the thing, when I do the interview, and because in the end, April first, you as the commission will be appointing this person, uh, I would like to have a commissioner from Mercer County with me to go over these, and to hire somebody with, and then a commissioner from Oliver County, because they are a big part of this position. So, um, whoever gets hired, you have input from Mercer County Commission, Oliver County Commission, and the three of us will decide, and then this person, I'll get to train, therefore, you know, when the time comes and you appoint this person, even though I believe, Todd, at the day that it opens up for them to appoint, it's open to whoever wants to apply, and then you guys will appoint, but at least we got to interview what we had out there, and pick who is, you know...
You brought up an interesting thing, I was even considering Oliver County, so does Oliver County have to vote on the position too, or is it just us?
No, you guys will appoint, but we have a joint powers agreement with them.
Okay.
And because of how much they put into this position, I want them part of it, and I know we talked about that when we signed that five-year agreement, and everybody here was agreeable to that.
Okay.
Carmen, I spoke a little bit about this during breaks, I was teaching yesterday. You've already heard my, my position, I want transitions to be as smooth as possible. We've got good professional people here, um, I like the idea of getting it, getting it rolling in advance. With the joint powers agreement, um, I haven't looked at this specific agreement, but if it's like every other... I'd like to take a look at it, it's not, I don't have to do it here in the next hour, but I don't know if Oliver County will have a veto. I'm sure they've got an out, and if we get somebody they don't like, I realize it's a remote possibility, um, could create a non-smooth transition. The commission, this joint powers, as I'm anticipating, Mercer County Commission makes that decision. So, back to what we talked about earlier today, if Carmen were to run for county commission and be auditor, that wouldn't work. We can have a, Angie's opinion, that's pretty close on that. But, because emergency management is supervised directly by the commission, so the commission needs to make that decision. Carmen's proposing, um, having the commissioner sit in on the initial interview, I think what you're proposing is a two-stage interview. Instead of, we get fifty applicants, we really want to have fifty applicants interview in a public meeting with the full commission. When you hire me to finish out Jessica's term, uh, and fill that position, that's different. Because if your state's attorney, who needs to be a trial lawyer, can't do a public interview in front of five commissioners, you don't want that person. Emergency management, they have some people who don't wanna do that, well, as Carmen can attest, you have many times to come before the commission. Carmen, that we should have some input from Oliver County. It's strictly up to the commission if you wanna do the two-stage thing, or if you wanted, you know, see what we get for applicants and decide from there. I think it's a good idea, like Carmen says, going more advertising the position, that they know what they're getting in. So if you're gonna do the two-stage... So, if you do the two-stage, it, it could save quite a bit of, um, it, it could save a great deal of hassles. That way, obvious candidates who were not a good fit could be eliminated, and you give the direction, we'll narrow it down to this meeting.
In, in this situation, I think it would be a good idea at least to offer Oliver County, um, if they're willing to send somebody for the interviews. Um, I guess depending on the number of applicants, you know, let's say we have ten and, um, through this committee, um, we narrow it down to two, then maybe we would do a, a public setting for the, you know, for the commission, for the finalist type thing.
If you're gonna do this as a full commission, I think you could set about no more than two commissioners doing the interviews. Do two from here and one from Oliver, or I don't want to run into public issues. It's not a legal requirement, but it is something that I like. If you're going to do interviews for a public position like this, that it be a public need.
I was just gonna ask, do we even have to do interviews?
I would recommend you do them because it checks off a number of legal boxes that could create headaches. Because if all of a sudden this is done, super-secret squirrel.
Well, I ain't suggesting super-secret, uh, but I'm just saying because- So- Because I've got, my mouth sometimes runs as, so does Todd's. And when you're, when you're at an interview, that's my thought too, depending on how many people apply. I'm just asking that as a general question. Do we have to do interviews? We, we would not have to.
Let's, um-
Okay, that, I just, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to them.
Good hiring practice.
All I was gonna say is, if we're in agreement, let's post the position, let's post it for two weeks, we'll have a new commission, we'll reorganize. And at that time, based on the number of applicants, we can make a decision as a board how we would like to proceed.
Then my next-
That's not one thing. I think it's a good idea if the incoming commission has organized to make that decision.
Right. And then I would also wanna-
Give them the January, February, March for training.
We'll, we'll have the next commission make that decision.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying, well, let's just, let's, let's advertise for it, get that process rolling.
Here's the thing, if you reappoint somebody else, I'm still here.
Correct.
I don't want you reappointing somebody unless I'm gone and you're, I mean, you know what I mean?
I know what you're saying.
All I'm doing is offering, if you want me to do some training, 'cause yeah, it's your ballgame. And honestly, Oliver County, it would be good to include them because they put so much money into this. The only thing we lose is their financial support. That's, and that's, even though he hasn't seen the contract, but that's the contract. And they can out of that contract anytime, which is not, whatever.
Right. I, I don't think any of us are opposed to the training. I, I think that's a great idea. However, let's get applicants first, let's get, um, some comment from Oliver County, and, um, if they're on board, I don't know if they would share in the cost of the training. If not, fine.
I believe that they would because their contract was for two people.
Okay.
But we did the motion, then it goes back to one, but I truly believe that they would pay that amount, the January, February, March. And then you go back to one, because then it's gonna be one.
Okay.
And then with the next thing is salary.
Right.
Are you advertising salary?
That's where I had the, this, and it's not a salary job, it is an hourly job. If we have two counties, it has to be hourly because the hours are divided up. And you're only one person in that department.
Okay, I'll rephrase that.
Legally cannot do a salary.
Right.
Is the-
I have a wage.
Wage range, wage.
Yeah.
Range?
I have a wage for an assistant, but that's something I have to-
Something the commission could decide to put that person in as an assistant is while training.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking, while they're training, leave it at that amount I have in the assistant.
Well, what I'm alluding to is, um, even though a new person gets hired, what are they assuming they're gonna be making an, an hour, what Carmen Reed was making an hour when she stepped out of the position? Pardon?
Depending on experience.
Yes, because my full salary, not salary, my hourly wage also covers the math and the G I S part.
Okay, I think-
If we could get somebody that had all that, how about?
When you put in that request for position, do we want to state a dollar value at the approximate?
Oh, I would say-
You should give a range.
A range?
Yeah. Okay, that's what I'm asking you.
That's kind of what Jean's alluding to. You were stumbling.
See, what do we want to choose for a range? Because when they apply for it, they're gonna call and ask for that number, so we may as well have it out there. What do we want to choose for a range?
I'm applying for your job. What, what's it gonna pay?
Applying for your assistant to help you, what's it gonna-
Do you remember how much we figured for the assistant position?
I'm thinking it was like, um, I, I-
I want to say it was like between nineteen and twenty-one or somewhere in there.
I think it was more like twenty-three or twenty-four. But you have to, I have to look.
You can do it as being an assistant who would move up, or you can do it that this is the second person and we'll be giving specific on-job training, or if you're calling law enforcement circles, field training.
You could put in your starting wage, night, I'm just gonna give you a number. Starting wage nineteen dollars an hour. Commiserate on, or whatever the right word is, on experience. Beginning at nineteen dollars an hour, commiserate on experience. Is that the right word?
I think putting a range in this is much better.
Okay.
Because we get somebody straight out of college with no real-world experience. Their education may give them a leg up on somebody who's never done this, but has what it takes to do it. Versus, and I'm just gonna throw out a name, emergency manager that every emergency manager knows, Carolyn Jappi out of McKenzie County. She's been doing this for decades, both in Montana and then when she relocated to North Dakota. Okay, if we're getting Carolyn, she's obviously worth more than somebody who-
Has no experience.
Has no experience. So if you put the range-
Is nineteen, is nineteen to twenty-three impractical?
Can we ultimately just not put a range and just say depending on experience?
That is perfectly legal.
That's what I'd like to see.
And then do some more research on what we want to, look at a budget and look at a-
Twenty-three to, 'cause yeah, 'cause I didn't seem like budget, budget, that actually that budget, so.
They're gonna call, they're gonna call you Samantha and ask us, ask you for a value.
Well-
And is that something that you guys have to-
Twenty-three to twenty-eight.
Vote on right now?
No, I'm just, I'm applying. You're starting the advertisement, so it can be acted on when it comes to the commission. You really want to tie the next commission, their hands as to, um, hourly wage?
Well, I think we need to look at our budget too.
Right.
Right.
To see where we're at. I think just throwing out numbers right now is not a good plan. I think we should put depending on experience and then revisit what we're gonna actually utilize at our next meeting when we have our new commissioners on.
Yeah, I think if, if we delay this two weeks, we're not, we're not hurting anything.
No.
Um, so I guess my recommendation would be, at the next meeting, have what we had originally budgeted for assistant, have some ranges, and then we can do an advertisement.
I have no problem with that. I just want to reiterate is the, the wage thing can make a big difference on whether-
Who applies.
Quality.
Whether I apply for the job or not. I mean, if, you know, if I know I'm gonna come in and make this, you know, let's say, I have no idea what you're making, Carmen. I didn't look, so I don't know. And, you know, let's say you're making thirty-five dollars an hour or forty dollars an hour, and that's, so that's what I'm gonna make? Will that make a difference on whether I apply for the job, or if I'm gonna start at nineteen and stay at nineteen, or fill fourteen? That's what I'm getting at.
Right.
So that, as, as we advertise this and knowing where we're going, because all the years you've had and experience in it, and then I apply and I know jack about this job, I'm gonna get the same wage you're getting. I, I'd have issues with that.
Just for a ballpark figure for you guys, three months is five hundred and twenty hours, and at twenty-five dollars an hour, I'm not saying we're choosing that, but if you, that's just a number, it's thirteen thousand dollars additional cost. So now you might help you with your range if you choose to go that way.
But I know when I did my research for like assistant, I truly believe it was like a twenty-three dollar area. It was not nineteen. And I'll check-
We recalculated and we discussed, and I know that it wasn't, it was, there was a, a difference there, but I can't remember how much it was when we discussed it.
I think it'd be a good idea like Travis suggested from a legal standpoint, not to look before you leave.
Right.
Okay.
If you don't have the numbers at hand right now, that's kind of a trickish decision.
But I agree, then that'll give me a chance to look at what you guys approved for my budget for that department, and then next meeting we'll go through that.
Yeah. And, and I mean, I'm in totally agreement that we should be looking and finding and training, but let's not make that haste decision and then regret it in two weeks.
Exactly.
And definitely, I, I do agree that we should have Oliver County involved.
Okay, good, 'cause, yeah. Makes it cheaper for us.
Well, and it just, it just makes common sense. You know, if he, if they're involved with it, then we should have them here as well, so.
Okay.
As far as the reorganization meeting, you can assign a commissioner, up to two commissioners in Mercer County to screen the out.
Screen the out, yeah.
I would say, okay, it's not within the state's terms, well, which is good advice. I would say reach out to Oliver County, let them know this is what we're looking at doing.
Yes.
So, they're not scrambling last minute.
Right.
And I do let them know when we had made that motion, that five-year agreement, so, you know, so they're aware of some of the changes.
For a position like this, it does not make sense for Mercer and Oliver to have two separate people doing the same job.
They may try and just couldn't get it, because it's part-time.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
So, uh, put it on next meeting's agenda. Thanks, Carmen.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Are, are all our favorites, portfolio updates. Um, Wayne, do you want to be last or first?
I can be first.
You can be first, okay. Last time you, you were upset.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be kind of short and sweet and Jean's smiling. Uh, we did have, I did have airport, uh, board meeting. Basically, uh, uh, just normal things, pay the bills and that type of thing, our contracts and all our dirt work and all our, is all done. So it's just maintaining and, and, uh, and some, something to keep in mind, one of you commissioners are gonna have to be on the airport, so. And that's, uh, weed board didn't meet, so, uh, I guess that's all I have. I have social service tomorrow.
Weeds are under control now?
Kinda. Got a good- John, you're good covering.
Refrigerated for us.
Yeah, okay, yeah, for spring. Thanks, that's all I got.
Liza?
Um, Candy continues to do a really nice job of making sure she goes through and takes any scrap or anything that we've got down to the, um, Bismarck, our man Dan, and I think she said she got another nice check the other week for going down there and taking care of things to get some more monies in for her landfill there. Um, otherwise I think things are going pretty well for her up there. A couple really windy days, but she's trying to get that under, or the best that she can.
I don't think she can get that under control.
Yeah, but when she can, she allow, you know, has people come in to do the garbage. Uh, ambulance, I, we don't have our meeting yet. And auditor, of course, we know that we will have a newly elected auditor come in, but that won't be till April. And I think that's what I got for mine.
Okay, um, as far as mine, not a whole lot going on right now. Um, I believe we usually have a library board at the meeting at the end of the year, and, um, um, there hasn't anything new on the, um, fair. Um, they have their annual conference here in November. And with Rick coming on to the board, I think he'd be able to give us more information on the fair going forward. But, um, I do have a Lewis and Clark board meeting December fifteenth, and, um, I think everything else is kind of winding up for the end of the year. Um, I'd just like to take this moment and thank, uh, Wayne and Marv for their service on the, on the commission, um, and, uh, knowing that we have a couple new commissioners coming in, um, be gracious to work with them, and congratulations to everybody that, um, was elected and, uh, for the county government and hope to continue moving forward. And like again, thanks for the commissioners that served and, um, everyone else that, um, that has served for us. It's, it's not an easy job, but we appreciate, um, the willingness to serve, so. With that, Marv?
I met with Charles Henkens on the road, which he brought up today, uh, continuing work on the solar ordinance, and I had a meeting with Custer Health on their third quarter, uh, for, third quarter financials report. I want to say a comment, um, we congratulate all those that got elected, but I also want to congratulate and thank everyone that had applied and sought for election. I think it takes a lot of courage and dedication, and it shows that they're willing to do what they can to give back to the communities. I want to make a special thanks to Samantha. She walked in and, in a tough time. It was a budget season and an election right after that, and, uh, she gave it her all, and I want to thank her for it.
Thank you.
Okay, Jean?
Um, mine's as usual. I don't have much to report. State's Attorney's Office seems to be pretty quiet. Sheriff's Department has had no complaints, and Clark of court has, everything's going smooth there, and so other than that, I don't have much to say, except thanks, congratulations to all those who won in the election.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention, I did meet with Jim here. Uh, we do have a young new maintenance man that's helping him out, and he's getting broken real fast here and hard, so.
He knows how to shovel now?
He knows how to shovel her now, so.
That's right, yeah.
And he didn't pass gypsy deaths.
Oh, she likes him, huh?
If a dog doesn't like somebody, go into business with them.
Where do you come up with this stuff?
Jean and I have that problem on my lawn. He taught that in high school.
With, with that, I'll, uh, call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission adjourned. See everybody in December?